Is it ringing or is it on vibrate?
No, I would put on. Yeah, I would put on vibrate. But it would still ring.
Thanks Pastor. I saw you walking every start this morning.
Oh my God. I have only that for rest. That's what I should.
Yeah, I'm halfway.
It'll go in next week.
Yeah, it's coming.
Back again.
Oh, there you go. For your new shirt.
Yeah, I know somebody.
I'm excited. I need my water. I don't have a drink. No. This is a.
Well, from what I call the corner, it was a common.
You need me to steal it?
You ready?
Ready when you are.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to call this evening's City of Uniontown's regular city council meeting to order November 3rd. 5:00 PM. Roll call.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Basaki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuan?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this evening, I got a few things to say and then we'll get to tonight's business. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Union Town Downtown Business Authority for their efforts in ensuring the city that we celebrate Christmas in the square. We'll light the square on November 25th and on December 10th, we will continue the celebration. It's been an absolute pleasure working with the Downtown Business Authority and the committee they put together to plan and implement such an event. I'd also like to take this time to congratulate the Union Town High School Cross Country Team, boys and girls, going to the state championship meet over the weekend. Union Town High School Cross Country Team and Coach Everhard are no strangers to hard work and discipline. As they can be seen running throughout the city streets through Bailey Park, Jack Quett Street, and up and down the city streets. We wish you the best of luck in your efforts this weekend and to bring gold back home to the School of Champions. You've already made us very proud. And also, I've talked with a couple of the boosters of the Cross Country Team and they want to plan a celebration in Story Square whenever they come home. And we'll keep the public posted on this event as it materializes. Again, rules for our public comment and agenda, comments on agenda items are posted on the door. Three minutes for everyone. And I know everyone's passionate. You wouldn't be here if you weren't passionate about our city. Sometimes we differ on opinions, but everyone wants to see the city go in a positive direction or you wouldn't be here. Of course, one person talking at a time. Everyone gets a chance to talk and please be respectful of everyone. If you talk out of turn, I'll ask you to refrain. And the second time, if you're talking out of turn or disrupting the meeting, we'll ask you to excuse yourself. I plan on having an orderly meeting and with your cooperation. Thank you. At this time, comments on agenda items only. Go ahead.
Okay, I got a few different items I want to speak on. First, my first question is to Mr. Billy. At the September meeting, I believe it was, you got into a heated confrontation with Ms. Kutek. Over $20,000 that was taken from the events, that was budgeted for events, I should say. And you said it was because we were behind on overtime. Now, I got to thinking, now, the city doesn't pay very much, with all due respect to the workers in that department. So that sounds.
Excuse me, Mr. Blackburn.
This is regarding 319.
319?
Yes, sir. So that was $20,000. That's a tremendous amount of overtime hours. So I was wondering, did that money all go towards overtime hours? Why was such a large buildup necessary before we paid them? And also, how did we come up with $2,192.96 for sanitary sewage for tools if we were behind $20,000 and had to rob another department?
So is this your comment or just your question?
It's both. It's relating to 319. So I'm wondering where the money's coming from? Since we were so broke, we had to rob the fund from the city to pay the workers who are busting their behind. So I'm just wondering where this $2,100 is coming from?
So, Mr. Blackburn, I'll answer that question. So the money that was in the line and budgets for the Italian Festival, the Italian Festival did not happen.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking where this $2,100 is coming from. Is that from that $20,000?
So it's in the lineup. There's budgeted in the lineup, yes.
Okay, okay. How come we couldn't just maybe use those tools a little bit longer before we robbed the events? That's my question. That's my concern.
So I'll stop you there. Okay, so the money was moved over. It was reallocated over to a different lineup where it could be more useful in the budget. Okay? So the term that you're using is not what had happened. Okay, so this is an area where you have overspend.
Well, it's how I want to phrase it. It's how I'm seeing it. So we're not going to play semantics. I said what I said and I meant what I said. That's why I said it. So we're not going to play semantics. I'm not, I got that disciplinary action.
I believe you answered your question.
I'm not one of those people. So please.
Yeah, I did answer your question.
Well, it's about what happened. You know all about it. But anyways, I'd like to stick to the agenda items. So please don't play semantics or try to talk down to me or reword what I said. I said what I said and I said it for the reason I said it.
Just comments on agenda items only, please.
I understand that he's the one that's getting distracted. I'm talking about 319. He's trying to bring up Italian Festival. I don't know what that has to do with it and he's trying to reword what I'm asking.
No, actually, I'm answering the question you did because you said that we took money from a line item that did not happen. So, yeah, so we did move that and it was voted on council. Council did vote on that. It did go with the majority. And that line, that, those funds got moved to the appropriate place in the budget. There's your answer.
So we couldn't rebudget what was already in that department? Instead of trying to rebudget, you know, just a simple, simple recalculations could have provided the city with revenue that could have further funded activities next year. But I'd like to move on to my next agenda item. That would be the treasurer's report right here on page four. If you'd look, it says, "As indicated in previous months, no entries have been made in QuickBooks by the Administration Department." I got a few questions regarding this, so bear with me. The Administration Department is ran by or headed up by the Board or a single individual?
Sorry?
Okay, let me start again until I have your attention. I want to make sure everyone is up to speed.
Are these questions all directed at myself or is this for, is this comments to council?
Does it matter? Does it matter to you, Mr. Billy?
I'm asking a question.
Okay, does it matter? Does it matter? Because they're agenda item questions. If they weren't on the agenda, you wouldn't be questioned. So this is, I'm asking, or I'm taking, since you think this question is about you, that you run up the Administration Department? Is that what I'm picking up here? Because I just asked who ran the Administration Department.
You can answer if you want.
Do we not know who runs the Administration Department?
Treasurer.
Yeah, I mean, any one of you can answer who runs that. Because I see something in the treasurer's report and it's an agenda item. I don't understand it. I have a question about the treasurer report, the agenda item.
So, yeah, the treasurer's not here to answer those questions for you?
This isn't something the treasurer controls. It's about the Administration Department, not the treasurer.
So just as a note, I'm not, I'm not seeing where that's referenced, that you're referencing in the treasurer's report.
He got it. It's like a quarter of the way through. It says page four at the bottom. I think that might be a misnomer.
Maybe 10, 12 pages in. Okay, so it's for the general fund.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, who runs the Administration Department?
It's the general fund ledger section of the treasurer's report, page four on that. So to answer a question, just as a reminder, that's why we want to try and have it where it's not a dialogue. So ask questions and then we're able to answer those after, you know, anybody, any particular.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll ask questions. Mr. Billy took offense to asking questions. I'm not sure why.
No offense taken, sir.
I don't need feedback, sir. I'd like to just finish my comments on agenda items like Mr. Witt said we should do.
I appreciate you here.
Have this dialogue. Please, I'm not going to let you talk over me. I'm a man. I'm not going to back down from you, buddy. I've heard all about you. I don't want to have a dialogue. I want to discuss agenda items as Mr. Witt laid out. So please have the respect for me, the public, the First Amendment, and this damn council.
Thank you.
Because I don't need your feedback or your smart aleck remarks. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Can you correct him? Because we're, I'm just told no dialogue and you're letting him be a jerk. I'm just, I'm just curious here. I'm just curious. Because I'm trying to talk the agenda. Look at him smirking, people. Look at this man smirking. I got stuff on him. Anyway.
Agenda items only.
Yes, sir. So who runs the Administration Department? That's my question. I can't get an answer. I get a smart ass remark. So I want to ask this question.
I will, I will answer that question after you're done with your comments. Did you have any other comments on any other?
Yes, I do, actually. I got comments for you. So let me go ahead and move along since you don't want to answer the questions. I'll just direct my comments to the public. Okay, so this is regarding 303, the grant money. Okay? authorize K-2 engineering to submit, Department of Community and Economic Development, Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Program Grant Application on behalf of the City of Union Town. So, like I said, 303. I want to know if they were notified by the Department of Community and Economic Development because my source was, and I want to know if they have handed in the financial statements that they requested an extension for, Mayor Gurke and Jared Billy, they requested an extension for August 2021, I believe. They have not done it. The city has been flagged. So that grant money they're trying to vote on, from what I've been told, the Department of Community and Economic Development has put a freeze on all funding for all grants in the city until they get in compliance. I want to know why we're not in compliance. I want to know who's in charge and why we're. Did you guys have something to say? I thought I heard something from the panic gallery.
If you'd like me to. Okay, go ahead.
Have you guys been notified? I want to know. Because it's going to be made public here in about two or three days.
So once again.
Maybe Monday or Tuesday next week.
We'll answer that question after your comments are up. But did you have any other comments on agenda items?
No, if you guys, I think those three might be more than you guys can handle. Mr. Billy couldn't seem to make it through just simply the mere asking of them. We will let you guys have a chance to respond.
So with respect to the question on the administrative office, so the administrative office serves all of council. It's also the direct supervisors for the administrative office, the Director of Accounts and Finance and the mayor. So they're employees within that office that are shared. Under the budget, they're assigned to different offices for budgetary purposes. But ultimately, it would be the direct supervisors of the administrative office would be the Director of Accounts and Finance and the mayor. Although all of council would serve as the ultimate. That's correct. Those would be the direct supervisors with the ultimate kind of supervisors being city council.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering, because it says here in a handwritten note, and I wanted further clarification on that, if that's true, why it's so, and I wanted to make sure that the people with direct supervision, so that's why I was wondering who was in charge. You seem to take it offensively. I'm just curious.
No offense taken, sir.
If you have any ordinances listed on website, website's kind of jolt. So it's hard to navigate what's going on in the city when that's the kind of, you know, web access.
So with respect to the DCD audits question, so the city is currently flagged, so to speak, for the DCD audits.
And also on the funding, I was told by a source that you can't release any funds for current grants or projects.
Grateful.
So currently, so currently, the city's flagged because they have not provided the two most recent audits for.
So 2021 and 2020.
I believe.
So why is it going to depend on us? Like, city treasurer, if we're not providing the audits that the state does require, now we're facing disciplinary action as a city, not as a treasurer. So I was curious here.
And I understand, but you had your chance for public comment. You did ask your comments.
Yeah, I didn't answer, so I couldn't have a full discussion.
So that's why I'm providing.
This conversation about each month.
Mr. Blackburn.
If you want me to go, I'll go. I can see you guys obfuscating, going to answer the damn questions. It's out there. I'll be putting more out there. Thank you for your time.
So just, I mean, for council's education and the public's as well, so the city has been red flagged for their DCD funding presently, so it's not able to disperse DCD funds currently. That is because currently, the regular DCD audit has not been completed as of yet and submitted to DCED. That was delayed as a result of the procedures that were undertaken to review certain finances that resulted and culminated in that auditor's report that was issued and made public earlier this year. Since that report has been completed, the city is in the process of now completing and finalizing those audits to get that DCED audit to DCED to pull that red flag and enable the city once again to start dispersing those funds. So the delay was a result of that necessary procedures to have those records reviewed in the treasurer's office earlier this year. But now that that has been completed, we're underway in terms of getting those audits completed moving forward. So, did council have any questions on that?
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Council.
Luke.
Evening.
Jim Hersick, on behalf of the Greater Union Town Joint Sewage Authority, speaking on agenda item number 302. We would ask that council support this service agreement between North Union, the city, and the Greater Union Town for the Kerr Street project. This is something that we've been pushing for a number of months now. We believe it's going to be a great infrastructure project for both the city and the township. And I would just urge your support and I thank you so much. You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only? If not, we'll have the monthly report of the treasurer. That's all I have.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town to receive a report of the treasurer for the month of October 2022, be in the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the October 6th, 2022, regular council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town for October 2022 invoices. The general fund, $102,728.46. Sewer fund, $118,329.87. Recreation, $346.04. Highway, $838.61. Recycling, $2,200.64. Off-street, $11,220.78. Library, $769.41. Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, a resolution of the City of Union Town requiring the tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes. Whereas the City of Union Town is a political subdivision and taxing body and taxing district of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that levies and collects real estate taxes. And whereas the City of Union Town is governed by the Third Class City Code of the Local Tax Collection Law. Whereas pursuant to the Third Class City Code and the Local Tax Collection Law, the city treasurer serves as a tax collector for city taxes, including without limitation, real estate taxes. And whereas the General Assembly enacted Act 57 of 2022, which was signed into law by the governor on July 11th, 2022, and has an effective date of October 11th, 2022. Whereas Act 57 of 2022 requires that a taxing district adopt within 90 days of the effective date of Act 57 of 2022, an ordinance or resolution requiring a tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes beginning in the first tax year after the effective date of Act 57 of 2022 under certain circumstances. Tim G, want me to read some of the things that's.
No, that's fine, yeah. That identifies the legislative action being taken.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to authorize the city clerk to advertise for bids for re-roofing of city halls. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to authorize the city clerk to advertise for gasoline fuel for all city vehicles for 2023. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to adopt a sponsorship agreement between the City of Union Town and sponsor for Bailey Park scoreboard advertising. The sponsor will pay to the city the sum of $500 for advertising for a period of one year and to adopt a sponsorship agreement between the City of Union Town and sponsor for Bailey Park scoreboard advertising for in-kind services sponsorship contribution to install the scoreboard in Bailey Park for the city. The in-kind services sponsorship contribution would provide advertising on the scoreboard for a period of one year.
And for the, for the council up here, it should read 500 and not 1,500. Yeah, so just to, you know, for our personal records there.
It says 1,500 on there because there's going to be three separate sections on the scoreboard for three different advertisers to utilize that space. And I believe there will be three foot by five foot performing all the statements.
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to authorize purchase of materials for Bailey Park improvements to include but not limited to paint, topsoil, brass feed, equipment rental for a price not to exceed $4,000. Mr. Billy?
So this was coming back out of the LSAT?
No, this would be coming out of the Recreation.
But we had reimbursement back into the.
We'll have that $18,000 coming back.
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to accept the quote from Constable Construction for the installation of four handicap ramps around city hall for a cost of $9,850. The city will supply the concrete and perform all demo of existing concrete. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to authorize the purchase of 56 one-skin of salt, 10% magnesium from Best Line Equipment for a purchase price of $532. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to approve addendum to security officer services client contract agreement between North Union Township and the City of Union Town pertaining to the remediation of stormwater runoff in an area on or around Kerr Street, which encompasses the geographical boundaries of both the township and the city. Addendum attached hereto. Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
This has been a long, long, ongoing process. This is something, it has to happen like yesterday. So it's exciting to finally see something like this getting off the ground, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
I agree with Mr. Basaki. It's a long time coming and it needs to be done. Of course, I vote yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to authorize K-2 engineering to submit an application for the DCED Small Water and Sewer Program Grant on behalf of the City of Union Town. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
So we are still able to apply for these grants? Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to approve a professional service agreement with K-2 engineering to provide civil engineering services to the City of Union Town by developing a sanitary collection system operations and maintenance O and M program in response to the DEP approved corrective action plan billed at an hourly rate not to exceed $4,500. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to approve a professional service agreement with K-2 engineering to provide civil engineering services to the City of Union Town by developing a sanitary overflow response plan, SORP, in response to the DEP approved corrective action plan billed at an hourly rate not to exceed $7,500. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council, the City of Union Town, to authorize the purchase of two dish drive wheels and maintenance part to operate the Compes screener from orbit screens for $7,000, I'm sorry, $700.
I'm going to ask a question real quick. Is this between, is this being split between us and South Union? So this is just. Okay. Gotcha. This is just a regular, like, maintenance wear and tear item? Yeah. Okay. Well, it's not a regular wear and tear item. I mean, it has to be replaced for a. It's got to be replaced. Okay.
Mr. Shuan?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the sale of the two thousand and twelve Chevrolet Impala issued to the fire department for scrap, Butchko Brothers, for a price of five hundred dollars to include towing it away. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve required PA state vehicle inspection and truck maintenance on the fire department engine number two. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Michael George from the Uniontown Downtown Business District Authority Board. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to appoint the following members to the Uniontown Downtown Business District Authority. Angela Braun DC to fill the unexpired term of Michael George, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven. Joseph Newbauer to fill the expired term of Tim Kelly, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-two. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize payment compensated expenses to Laura Cootek as follows. Ten sick days, eight vacation days, a total of eighteen days, equaling one hundred and seventeen hours, for a total payout of three thousand, thirty dollars and thirty cents. Mr. Billy?
Mayor, was this, were these all approved by you?
Yes.
So you looked these over?
I did.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within state right-ofways. And whereas the Department of Transportation requires the City of Uniontown to pass a resolution to authorize the placement of banners or signs and to set certain limits on said banners and signs. This is an application for the Turkey Trot to place a banner on Bayett Street. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the quote for services and materials from Langley Electrical for repairs to three light poles in Bailey Park parking lot for balance, wires, and bulbs at a cost of three thousand dollars to include labor. To convert bulbs to LED lighting would be an additional eight hundred dollars to total cost. So to leave them as they are, it's three thousand dollars. If you wanted to convert them to LED lights, it would be thirty-eight hundred dollars, including material and labor.
So technically, what are we going to do? What are we actually voting on?
I'm sorry?
Are we actually voting on the thirty-eight then?
Well, we probably need a motion to see which one you would want to go with.
So would there be a motion for one or the other that any member would want to make?
I'd like to make the motion to the additional eight hundred dollars to convert to LED.
So there's a motion for the thirty-eight hundred. Is there a second option? All right, so you have the new...
It's going to pay for itself in maintenance after...
Who was the second? I'm sorry. Mr. Winfrey? So this would be taking a vote on the additional eight hundred dollar cost for thirty-eight hundred dollars to convert the bulbs to LED. Don't forget where I left off. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes, this is mostly for the ones around the large parking lot street, across the street from classes.
And Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the quote for purchase of three Superior Radiant sixty thousand BTU natural gas burner heaters from Famous Supply of Uniontown for use in the street department garage at a cost of eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for all material. Installation will be done by city maintenance employee. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Are these free standing?
These are, I believe, are going to hang from the ceiling.
They're hanging from the ceiling and they're ready to... It should be a lot more efficient than the permits that we have in there as the permits that are in there were taken down from the building. They're part of the city park a couple years ago. But these premises that are there are probably from sixteen to seventeen.
Or before. Yes.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
And I'd like to just clarify, the reason I'm saying no is because we have other departments too that we're trying to work in. We're at the end of the year. We had a very constructive conversation for budget talks. Even though we're getting to the end of the year, the expenditure, these expenditures that we were accumulating, I'd like to hold off and try to hold off until next year. And that's the reason I'm voting no for that.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the quote for purchase of one Clopay model thirty-two hundred insulated commercial garage door from J and J Garage Doors at a cost of three thousand, two hundred dollars and an additional one thousand, seventy-five dollar installation fee for use on the street department garage. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the quote for purchase of two Clopay model thirty-two hundred insulated commercial garage doors, nine, one twelve by seven, and one nine by seven, from J and J Garage Doors at a cost of three thousand dollars for use in the Church Street Garage.
Johnny, can you give us a little more clarification for what, with this, where they're going to be and for, like, why they need replaced? Just so we can...
The street department, over the years, it's been hit a couple times. I believe a lot of times, yeah, several times. The ones that the department are on there where...
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about.
The street painter, she's the one in Georgia, maintenance guy operated out of. The look of their maintenance, they do get nothing done by the street painter. Their whole, they have those doors. They sell them, they fall them off the track a few times. You have to fight to get back on.
Okay.
So we're talking about garage doors at two different facilities?
Correct.
Well, this one here is for, these two here are for the one garage though, right?
Yeah, the two together for the park.
This one, yeah, these two here together for the park.
All right.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Just one clarification on that last one. It was three thousand total?
Total. One with thirteen and one with seventeen. Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of cordless tools, items numbered listed attached from Lowe's Home Center for one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents for Buildings and Grounds Department. Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Basaki?
Do we have cordless tools now, John, or... So these are like drills and...
Yeah, can you give us just a break there real quick on this?
You should have a list also.
I'm trying to figure out the lower bear kit.
Another hammer drill, saw, law, another battery.
Chisel. Okay, so the hundred and fifty piece can't accept that sockets? Do you guys have, you have sockets right now?
He has the, he has, he brought his, he brings his own tools in from home.
Okay.
Mr. Basaki? Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Can't get the job done if you don't have the equipment, I guess.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown...
We are getting a job done now, currently, in the current status, we are.
Yes.
To authorize the purchase of a grease gun kit from Cobble Building Supply for nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cents for use in the street department. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Basaki?
This is going to be replacing one we have, or...
No.
Grease gun.
This is not, that's a grease gun, it's a power tool. Again, the only power tools they have is what they bring in, is a grease gun replacement. They have a whole air one, quit working.
So it's down?
Yeah.
Yes.
And Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of cordless tools, a rotary hammer with batteries, and a grease gun kit from Cobble Building Supply for a cost of two thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars for use in the sanitary sewer department.
Is this different than the ones that, on previous?
Different departments, probably, it's all the same. The one major thing, the rotary hammer, we are trying to work in five, five bases, manual, bed base, it's very hard to create a hole in it, carve the hole, you can't hold jack anytime.
No, it's, you can't hold jack, well, you can't tech, hold jack every time, but I've done it, it's not safe, it's not a good idea, so.
This does come out of the sewer.
And would this would come out of the sewer fund?
So this does, this purchase actually does come out of the sewer fund? So this is not, this is not an expenditure that comes out of the general?
Right, because the other ones would have been general fund, which I, there was twenty-five thousand dollars in capital outlay, I talked to you about that, was never touched in this budget for some of these items. And this was the sewer fund.
Okay, so it's coming out of the sewer fund. For me, yes. I don't know if you were at it, I think. I don't know if you were, I just was asking about the tool, sorry.
Okay, I'll start with you. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the purchase of four tires for the two thousand and fifteen F-two-fifty used in the sanitary sewer department from Ford Service at a cost of one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars in chi-sen. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
And to clarify, this expenditure does come out of the sanitary sewer fund, and I'll be voting yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Monthly reports, Fire Department Chief Call.
Bingo. Oh, sorry. It's always come out, I forgot I jumped in.
All right, good evening, everybody. Just a real quick report, little rundown of the activity of the department for the month of October is as follows. Fifteen fire-related incidents, this included six building fires, four trash fires, one passenger vehicle fire, two outside vegetation fires, one dumpster fire, and one scorch burn, but no active fire. This was in a building that was fortunately out on the route. We had twenty-one rescue-related incidents, nineteen of these being motor vehicle collisions, one animal rescue, and an extrication of an ill or injured person from a building. Four hazardous condition incidents, these included one natural gas leak and three electrical emergencies. Twenty-two service-related incidents, this included six general public service calls, one assistive police or another governmental agency, one person in distress, and fourteen lockouts were gain access. We had six fire alarm activations, and we had three witness fire drills in a public facility, and these, as always, included facility staff training, pre-incident planning, and building for realization for our personnel. Also, I'd like to always report on the training conducted for the month. We had some real impressive numbers for the month of October, a hundred and sixty of training either taken or conducted amongst the department. Also, I'd like to report on a couple of specialized trainings that department personnel took. Four of our paid staff and one of our volunteer members participated in a specialized training class that was hosted by another county fire company, and this was on heavy rescue operations, involving large commercial vehicles. Additionally, we had two personnel travel all the way to Harrisburg to take some training out there too, so kudos to them. It's something to be proud of that the guys are going out, you know, seeking this training and everything, so. On to the apparatus updates. Council, thank you for the approval of the last PA state inspection. I promise it's the last one for the year, of course, we're into November, so, and there's always another calendar year coming, so, but they roll around every year, so it's very much appreciated. We did complete our annual ladder testing that you had approved a couple months back. The company came in, and this is per all of our industry standards, everything passed. Everything went well, we're just waiting on the pump test to come in, and we're going to be good for another year. Unfortunately, we did have a couple of emergency repairs on some apparatus, so we appreciate you bearing with us with that. There's some, it stinks, but stuff breaks sometimes, and I can hate you. So, and just a couple other things miscellaneous, fire prevention efforts for the month of October for National Fire Prevention Week, they were a success. However, like I always stress, we continue to do these activities all throughout the year. We're pretty aggressive with that, so it's very good. Our personnel participated in a number of community events. This included, like, the trunk-or-treat, the Halloween parade, citywide trick-or-treating, so we like to get involved in the community, so we like to report that we are involved in the community. And then lastly, Council, I'll put you on the spot, what's tonight?
Bingo.
There you go, six forty-five.
Bingo.
That's all I have, so thank you very much.
Mark Ray.
What's going on today down at the department?
Oh, we were busy. We were busy.
It is. That's what it is, it's Mark Ray.
Oh, the big group, the big group, yes, yes. We had a school group come in to tour the station, we did a fire prevention lesson with them. I think we had about forty or fifty kids, a bunch of parents, we probably had about a hundred people down there, yeah. How could I forget that? We were back and forth doing so much today, though, so, but it was very successful. So, yeah, yeah, like I said, we always welcome that opportunity, so. All right, well, thank you, we appreciate it. you, we appreciate it.
Thanks, chief, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Police Department Chief.
So, during the month of October, Uniontown Police Department responded to seven hundred and fifty-four calls for service, a breakdown of some of those calls included twenty-eight vehicle accidents, seven assaults, thirteen welfare checks, twenty-six domestic violence, six assist fire calls, fifteen disorderly conducts, uh, twenty-five emergency medical assists, eighteen assist other police, eleven harassments, two shots fired, let me say it again, two shots fired, noticeably different from where we were at the beginning of the year, a lot of hard work has went into that, granted, we're in a colder season now, less people out, so, but it's still way lower than where we were, I'm proud of my guys for that. Twenty-eight alarms, sixty-nine suspicious persons, activities, vehicles, twenty-one thefts, two burglaries, eleven animal complaints, and six overdoses, of those six overdoses, officers administered Narcan three times, resulting in a lifesaving turnout. Um, officers made a total of twenty-seven criminal arrests, issued eighteen non-traffic citations, and thirty-eight traffic citations. Uh, we also conducted vehicle foot patrol, foot patrols to the city parks as well as Sheepskin Trail, officers, uh, heavily patrolled for the South Union, those there, their trail event or trick-or-treating, so we had a bevy of officers out there for their, their whole event, that was a huge turnout for that, it was enormous, it was enormous. In the month of October, Uniontown City Police Officers conducted over two hundred hours of training, uh, to include firearms, narcotics investigations, building entry and clearing, K-9 training, and K-9 decoy training. A lot of these trainings, the, the building entry and clearing is actually a SWAT training, it was paid for by the Bay County District Attorney's Office for two of our officers to travel out into the central part of the state, the DA's office paid for lodging for our guys, although they were out there and paid for the course, so we're appreciative of them of that, because our guys were able to bring that training back and train more of our guys up even though they don't have the certificate, they're still able to pass on knowledge, they could save someone's life. Obviously, the city had reinstated citywide trick-or-treat, that event went on without any known issues to our department. The Halloween Parade was again largely successful, and I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce of Bay County, uh, for their intensive planning to put this event off every year, despite what some people may say, City Council does not put off the Halloween Parade, it is put off by the Chamber of Commerce, and they need to credit for that, they put in hours and hours and hours, countless amount of time, putting this together, and they deserve all the respect that they can get for putting on a successful event that they do every single year. It is the largest parade that our city has, probably one of the biggest events that our city has, I know my kids look forward to it, as well as many other guys that are, that have kids around here, that, they're, they go to it. Thank you to the Uniontown Fire Department who assisted us with traffic control and other related activities for both the trick-or-treating and the Halloween Parade, I know you guys threw a blocker truck up for us on East Main Street, thank you. During the month of October, to current code enforcement took fifteen new complaints, uh, nine were corrected by the property owner, which is our ultimate goal, and twenty-eight cases were carried over into November. Obviously, high grass season is coming to an end, so, Officer Camper's not going to be as busy, uh, taking care of your high grass, but we're getting into the new season where snow's going to start falling, so it is the property owner's responsibility or business owner's responsibility to have their sidewalks cleared in a certain amount of time, we ask that you do that for safe passage of anyone who's on foot, um, I know some snow events require some more time, depending, John and you guys sometimes have to clear snow for days, so, uh, just please take care of that and pick up your trash, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, chief. Director of Public Works, Mr. Podolinski.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and council, uh, I actually forgot to grab the sewage report, I apologize for that, uh, I don't have their total income for this month. I'd like to say that our paving bid should be done today, and it, uh, went very smoothly, and I think the streets look, uh, it turned out pretty well, I'm sure a lot of people are happy to see behind the shopping center paved, I know it was an ongoing issue to keep all the holes fixed, and, uh, I'd like to apologize to the couple of people that we had to tow their cars on South Street, but I'd just like to stress to pay attention to your surroundings, and if you see a sign on a pole that says no parking, I won't park there, uh, we had to, I believe we had to tow three cars that day to mill the street off, and I guess it just is what it is at that point. Costable that got the, uh, that you guys approved for the handicap ramps, they are the contractor that did the paving, there was two ramps, including with the paving bid, and they were by far the cheapest to do the ramps with the paving, so that's why I went to them to get a price, and, uh, they said they're able to fit that in their schedule this year and get it done, so, that'll give them accessibility here to City Hall, and I'm sure the people that are, uh, disabled and area will appreciate that. It looks good. As far as that, uh, we're getting ready, we're going to start gearing up for winter, getting the plow trucks going and testing out their operations, and I don't foresee any, uh, major issues with getting them ready, but you never know, so, we'll see how that goes, and, uh.
How's the street sweeper working?
New street sweeper is working phenomenal, uh, the only complaint the operator has is that it uses twice the amount of water as the old one, but that's because all the water just worked correctly, and it cuts down on the dust by ninety percent. The old sweeper we had, they always tell us the story where there was a dust cloud, and some lady thought she was going to floor it to get through it, well, it wasn't a dust cloud, it was a street sweeper in the middle, and she smashed the street sweeper and totaled it. So, thankfully, it cuts down on the dust, that's also a major health issue, I've seen the operators come out of the sweeper that we just replaced with this one, they look like they came out of a coal mine, they wear respirators and goggles, and all you can see is the white around their eyes, so.
Definitely makes a difference, seeing that what I've seen, I have heard of a lot of difference.
Yeah, yeah, it does a very well job picking up. Other than that, that's all I really have.
Yeah, but I should have a street, a street sweeper, not a law curfew, sure.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, but thanks, very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, John, I got a lot of compliments on the new street sweeper.
All right, thanks.
Good job, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. Um, Community Development Coordinator, I don't think Mr. Shawn's available this evening, but Joe, you had something to bring up, didn't you?
No. Oh, well, I was going to do the last meeting, but I can do it this meeting again.
Okay.
I just want to, uh, uh, thank, well, council and the mayor and myself, I want to thank Joe Walcos and his group for taking care of Bailey Park and, and the other city property that's, that's in our, under our umbrella, so I just wanted to personally thank Joe Walcos, Walcos and his group.
Always looks phenomenal, always.
Bailey Park especially, so.
Joe had contacted me this week and just thanked, thanked me and the city for letting him do the work, so he, he's appreciative of having the work, and we're surely appreciative of what he does.
Yes, we are.
Okay, um, it's time for public comment, we have any public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
Did we find anything out about the Redevelopment Authority?
So, we are, we actually had a meeting earlier this evening, um, between representatives of the city and the Redevelopment Authority, um, we're working on finalizing that cooperation agreement, and we are in the process, too, of getting the items requested by DCD for the 2022 CDVG application in place, um, I'll be working with, um, Mark John and the Redevelopment Authority folks to get those items to DCD, so we can get that extension, get that application in, and then proceed forward with that relationship where they would administer those funds on behalf of the city.
Do we find anything out about the low-interest loans?
We had a discussion where, uh.
Yeah, we, we'd have a discussion with the Redevelopment Authority folks about that.
Okay. I would assume that by the next meeting we'll know something about those low-interest loans?
I, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Is it, is the treasure still bonded?
So presently, presently to the city's knowledge, yes, the city has not received notice that that bond has been revoked.
Anything else that, like, going on with that investigation at all?
Not, nothing further at this time, um, like I said, once the city receives any additional updates or information, um, once it's been received by the city, acknowledged by City Council, that would become public information as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Go ahead. Uh, just wanted to remind everybody to make sure you go out there and vote on this coming Tuesday, that's it.
Bob was just, today's, uh.
Are those the new apartment, like, at Bailey Park? What is that, is that for Bailey Park?
Yes.
Or is that going to be split between the new South Union complex and Bailey Park?
There's no.
I think there's gonna, you want to answer that, mayor?
There's no agreement made at this time between South Union and the city.
I was just wondering, because it was sort of an odd time.
It just, it just happened at that, at those times. Yes, no, there, there's no agreement with the city of South Union.
This is a new board.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, the city, or the, 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 the work going on?
I just, that work there was from a private donor, all that work that has been done at Bailey Park, the recent work, has been from a private donor.
You guys put a pickleball down there, too, right?
Yes.
It's in the conversation.
It's in the, it's in the.
He says like the fastest running sport, man.
It is, it's in the conversation, Brian, we have a lot of conversations going on about Bailey Park, looking forward to all of this, yes, sir.
Um, work going on, is his job? If, if, if he even had to be involved or there, what is his job?
So, so he previously was holding that, that as an employee position, um, just last month he'd submitted, submitted his resignation for that employee position, um, he's been retained on a consultant basis to finish out some of the projects he's been working on, primarily, his responsibility was tasked for facilitating various, um, community development projects, so for example, like Sheepskin Trail, um, and a lot of the work that was done in connection with the Sheepskin Trail was one of the items that he'd worked on, um, identifying and pursuing some additional grants for some city, um, improvements and some city programs, um, that's another item that he worked on, the, the city's comprehensive plan, um, that he was, uh, that we're actually in the process of working on, um, was one of the items that Mr. John had in particular headed up, so, those were some of, just a few of his responsibilities.
Is that different from Mr. Cutex's job?
So, yes, that would have been a different, a different position, um, Ms. Cutex's job focused more around planning events and facilitating communications as, as, uh, something sort of like a public relations professional for the city itself.
We have, you know, we have Bailey Park down there, and it seems like it's, uh, I mean, I mean, we've grown up, all this, part of it is going all the way over, and we change, I have, I have.
That's what we're trying to encourage.
You have so much potential there.
We're working on, as you can see, the improvements, that's, that's our long-term plan. Yes, we're, we're working, the trail wasn't here last year, the improvements at Bailey Park weren't here last year, we're working toward having activities there, and like tonight, whenever we approve the, uh, the advertising for the school board, there's a new school board coming in, there've been some people showing some interest in bringing some other type of baseball besides Union Town High School coming, we, we're working on getting the lights, you know, working, um, having them work, we're hoping that Union Town can play their, their baseball games under the lights this year, we've been, matter of fact, we've had contact with West Penn Power today, that we're working very hard to get lights working for, for springtime, so there are.
I mean, it'll stood.
We're, we're working, we're bringing people in. Yes. It, it takes a little time to get there, Mark, be patient, it's, it's coming, last year, we, last year, we didn't have, we didn't have the trail going through there. Okay, but I, I think, uh, Mr. John has headed up a lot of projects that have, um, starting to come around, and first it was just talk, now we're starting to see some things being done, and hopefully in another year, you'll see a lot more done.
And just to clarify, too, with, uh, Mr. John, he's on a contract to the end of the year, and then that contract is up, that will, I'm assuming, be brought back to the table next year, if there's any other needs from the gentleman.
No, we, we do want it to go back to where it was, just what you said, back in the seventies
And, and also, to add, to add to Councilman Shuhon, and, and also to the mayor, you know, this is something that we need to reach out back to the older organizations that we had before when we played baseball, um, I'd like to see, you know, we had a fireman team, I'd like to see a police and fire team, and getting back to the Kiwanas, the Teamsters, getting over to the Elks, getting back all of these, all of these, uh, all of these, uh, teams, and, 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 you know, it's going to be hard to get a lot of the people, but we have two people in this room right now that were involved whenever I played baseball, and, uh, one is a councilman, and, you know, we're really leaning on folks, uh, here at the table, not only here at the table, but also from the public to, to also step up, because this is for the future, you know, this is dealing with the kids, the future of our city, and if we give them an opportunity other than just hanging around on the street, and if we put, you know, if we put athletics in their life and give them something to do after hours, that chews up a lot of time, and for my, my case in point is, for me, the amount of time that was chewed up in Bailey Park, it, it saved me as a child, and, uh, you know, and I'm hoping that we still have all the cooperation that we used to, to get this back in, and I, I really would like to see a police and fire team. Yes.
The major problem that we had to end our tenure at Bailey Park was that Quonis program, thanks, they didn't want to sponsor anymore because they started getting, uh, strung out, South Union started coming in, wanting ads, wanting sponsorship, wanting this, uh, uh, Allen Phillips and all those places, they started coming in the city, and a lot of the people that sponsored, they said, we can't afford to, to sponsor four, five, six, and then what happened was, it was just baseball, then it went to football, soccer, and all those different sports, and so that sort of helped heal Bailey Park.
Yeah.
It really is.
Um, that, that's all I have.
I have a question, Mark, let's go, yeah, has anyone looked into, I know we approved that crosswalk at the White Swan, in the back, seeing that talk?
I just talked to Garrett tonight about that.
So, in, in, in talking with Councilman Basaki, uh, we will probably need to do some type of traffic study to get that, um, to, to get a handicap entrance so we could do the crosswalk, and, you know, and that was my point, you know, a few meetings ago, is to still continue with that, uh, with the traffic study from K-2, because there might be things just like this popping up that, you know, it, and it would have been great if we could have just rolled the paint right out for it.
Yeah, if there would have been one, if we had, there's handicap access on some of the parts, you know, where the White Swan is, but on the other side where it goes to connect, there isn't, so you can't just terminate it at a sidewalk or curb.
Because I would also like to see traffic lights, a signal light as well, you know, illuminating the crosswalk, I think that, you know, and those are the things that I was talking about when, you know, there's more that probably can be done.
Hey, uh, chief, would we be able to put signs there like you have down by the police station?
Uh, signs in terms of, like, crosswalk?
Yes.
Once it's an actual crosswalk in, yes, but, like, I talked to Tim about this in the past by a different location, we were looking at, we had, we needed complaints up in the east end, um, specifically with these main streets in the area that's split with Bay, that's a high traffic area, um, we're definitely going to have to look at traffic study in that region, too, just because part of that is, we're getting speed complaints on there, we can't enforce speed because you need a thousand foot zone, or even four speed for the steps, um, step down speeds, a thousand long goes to forty-five, thirty-five in the city, we can't enforce that speed, so we can technically enforce the speed there, we can enforce speeds, but the traffic study will be more feasible because then it can force the change of the hand speed sooner or later in the city. So, yeah, once you have a crosswalk in place, we can get crosswalk signs put in, that can help give us a level of those, we still have a lunch, and we need to, last night, uh, so we've put up, done enough, uh, based for everywhere we get, but that'll prepare, usually in spring, so there, there is just good. But, yeah, that, those are absolutely feasible, do with the first step, I believe, to make sure everyone is legally protected, one, and we're not putting a crosswalk, we put it in a position where we think looks good.
Exactly.
When realistically someone who's K-2 or someone like that, revealing a traffic study, we can root with that crosswalk gap, it's actually worse, so you don't want to put ourselves in a bad situation, let alone pedestrians who are going to be shooting that crosswalk, uh, visibility and all the same, people are coming, so, yeah, traffic studies are the first step before that goes in, so that we can start, just to make sure we're something we call the safety.
And, and another reason, too, to add to it, is, you know, we have the entrance of Sweet Pea's gas station right there, so putting a crosswalk right where the entrance is, and that's, you know, by no means am I an expert when it comes to, to, to engineering, so, you know, that's why I think that it's just best for us and the city to move forward with the traffic study.
I can tell you from, from experience, that, that area over there is having massive amount of traffic, or by a lot of foot traffic, I mean, we had, we were in talks with Penn Dogs before I became chief of their own, and in a twelve-month period, we had two fatal crashes, vehicle versus pedestrians, I think it was two fadals, one deer fatal, right by the old Beer Street, you're crossing over towards South Street, um, I think the attitude lights and, and other things, I thought over there, but those are all things that have to turn off the traffic, I mean, I understand tragedies, force our hand sometimes to get things done, but we can't take a knee-jerk reaction. Because I understand tragedies force our hand sometimes to get things done, but we can't take a knee-jerk reaction and make it wrong.
There's one other thing, she explained that we're supposed to remember.
Okay.
Is it gonna pursue Bailey Park?
Yes, that's our plans. We have a meeting next Thursday to discuss that a little further. No, we have, we have funding in place. There's just a few things that we have to take care of.
Details.
But we're moving right along with that, okay? Yes, sir.
Couple, couple times I've talked on this subject. I ran behind Paul there, that alley. I've discovered the problem. There's, there's a one-way sign halfway down that alley, and people think they can come down that alley, but it's one-way, one-way down, and they don't see a sign until they get halfway down it. And today, almost with car cracks, you know, car cracks. But the thing of it is, what is it, put a "Do Not Enter" sign at the top, is that? Okay, that's right. It put a "Do Not Enter" sign.
They have signs there.
Is there one of them? You mean, don't bury it, just ignore it.
Well, it's one of the things, too, is when they come out of the back of the world, they make a right.
Exactly.
A really good owner's, I have to love him.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. But, I mean, it's crazy. I mean, it's busy, long-way traffic here. Yeah, I'm just saying. Is there? Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
That's all I have, Ms. Marshall.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, the council adjourned to me Thursday, November 17th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Garki?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
We gotta get together next week.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, that's why I got it right here. I got it right here.
Hey, Mark Rafe.
Hey, did you watch baseball last year?
You're welcome.
No, I forgot about that. I watched that one.